All right. This is the November 16th meeting of the Village of Leonard Planning Commission. I'd like to open up with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we'd like to ask for guidance so that we can make fair and just decisions for the people of the Village of Leonard. Amen. Okay. I'd like to take roll call. Paul Elmoretti.
Yes.
Leslie McKenna here. Doug Noaker is absent with excuse. And Jennifer Swack.
Here.
Lori Zelnick.
Here.
Okay. Next item of business is the approval of our last meeting in August's agenda. If you go ahead and take a minute to read that over. And when that's ready, I'd like a motion to approve...
Do you want this month's agenda?
Oh, am I doing agenda?
Agenda.
Yeah, agenda.
Agenda.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda, November 16th.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll look at the approval of the minutes from our meeting of August 17th at 23.
I have to make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 17th meeting.
I'll second that with a correction to the second word on the minutes of McKenna.
Where are we at?
Yeah, two N.
Oh, thank you.
That's it. Otherwise, I second the other one.
Yeah, I picked that up from like three meetings ago and that error... It can... Errors can perpetuate themselves.
Yes.
Okay. With the corrections. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Audience business, there's none. We do have one audience member. The... But he's on the agenda. So, the next item of business is we have the... I'd say the fire chief of Leonard, Jerry, and he wants to present to us a site review for the fire department Station One diesel fuel pump proposal. So, do you want to have... Come out and just tell us about it and then we'll review it?
All right. So, this back up several years ago, probably about six years ago, seven years ago, we had tried to acquire a gasoline or class one flammable liquid tank at Station One. We went through the process. We were okayed at the planning commission back then. But as we went to go further, I realized that the gas company told me that gasoline doesn't stay that long. We don't use that much. So, we exhaled that project and we moved on. We forgot about it. But we're now at Station Two. That tank, diesel tank, class two combustible fluid, has been down there since 1987. And I think this guy over here would remember that. It's a single wall tank and it has a spill container made out of cement underneath it. They've made a lot more advancements in the containment in case there is a leak. The tank that I proposed is a double wall tank that we're going there. There's no more spill container for the... If there is a leak to contain it. So, we just need to move it up to Station One. We're using all of our trucks are out of there. And the company that we have leased the tank for, it's been so long that the pump is messed up and it's going to cost us a little bit of money to fix the pump. So, I'm thinking that, you know what? If we just move it up there and have a new tank and comply with the new, you know, fire code, it would just greatly help the department out from wasting fuel going back down to Station Two all the time to fill.
Oh, you fill at Station Two?
Yeah, we fill at Station Two right now currently.
Will they be coming to Station One to fill then?
Well, we are at Station One most of the time.
No, but I mean from the other station.
Station Two, yes. But those vehicles don't get used as much as Station One vehicles do. So, yes, they would come up to Station One.
Okay.
Makes more sense to put a new one in instead of...
So, we filled out the application again. As you can see, we did a little diagram of all the setbacks. Now, mind you that the setbacks are a little less than a flammable material or liquid. This is a combustible. It's diesel fuel. So, it has an ignition point over 100 degrees. We do meet all the setbacks for the drains. As you see, I put there was two drains there. And then the well is the things that are in particular in the lot line setbacks are adequately met. I will tell you that we did follow along because I am the fire chief. I would have been fed and inspect this. So, I wanted to make it pretty strict and not just like, oh, I'm the fire chief. We can do what we want. No. I made sure that we followed along with the International Fire Code 2018 that we are currently in, and that would be chapter 23 in class two flammable liquid.
Let me write that down. Chapter two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three. Chapter 23. What did he say? Chapter?
Uh, checker 23, class two flammable liquid.
Class two.
I have a copy of the International Fire Code and it does refer to other NFPA codes. But what we're doing with the class two flammable li... Or combustible liquid, it... The International Fire Code, it addresses all of the applicable codes.
Actually, placement's probably better than Station Two.
Yes. And that was the other problem. At Station Two, we have a lot of problems with traffic and that parking lot's being filled more and trying to get the big trucks in there to fill up during working hours is kind of a concern.
How many gallons is the tank?
It is a 500 gallon tank.
Okay.
Current tank.
500 gallons.
And how often do you have to fill it?
Uh, more than I'd like. I don't know the numbers. I apologize. I know the dollars versus the gallons.
Right.
We're going about $12,000 a year to fill.
Wow. Okay.
Unfortunately. So, why am I... That's all I remember.
Right. Okay. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Everyone saw the pictures that I took today of the station. He's got... They've got plenty of space, plenty of setbacks when it comes to the planning commission book. And you probably... You can probably sit down. If we have questions, we'll...
You'll yell at me?
We'll yell at you, yes. Interestingly enough, you know, the only thing that speaks of fuel in the planning commission is... I mean, in the code ordinance book, has to do with gas stations. But he's not doing a gas station. It's more of a fuel. And there's a precedent because Station Two already has that kind of thing and we can...
Refer back to...
Right. Refer back to the, you know, that would be allowed. I know the...
I was gonna say not only allowed, but probably encouraged just because of the amount of activity that's now going in with pickleball and all the stuff to get those types of things away from that area.
Uh-huh.
Less people around. Now, he's in an area that he's all by himself. Everybody's...
He has met the setbacks. It's not obtrusive to anyone's...
Obviously, it's...
...view in the back. I think it's far enough away from the pond, but the pond is a source of water for the fire trucks to fill. They wouldn't want diesel fuel leaking into the pond and then throwing it on a fire. That would...
Yeah, the pond, I think it was actually like 600 and some feet away. We didn't put it out there on the...
Oh, you... It's on...
Oh, it is on there.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight.
It's 470. Almost 480, yeah.
Okay, we didn't put it out there. Angela and I did walk it up.
Uh-huh.
So, I remember that now.
They're gonna follow all the electrical codes and their current... Electrician on record is Steve Johnson.
Yes. Yes, we will take out the regular permits and everything like anybody else would here in the village, yes.
Right. And is there... Is there any plumbing that will be done too or just electrical?
Well, they... No, there will not be any plumbing, but there will be pounding of rain because it has to be explosive proof.
Right.
Electrician, that's why I want my electrician to do it and do it up to the applicable codes.
Okay. Does it vent at all?
Yes, there is a vent.
And is there any danger of it being too close to your generator?
Oh, no. No, it's... It means the setbacks for the...
Okay.
The generator currently runs on natural gas.
Right. But it is an ignition source of some kind. It's probably just electric ignition.
And again, it's diesel, so we don't...
Your generator's diesel?
No.
No, the fuel is diesel, yeah.
Diesel is diesel.
It's not as explosive.
Remember, usually you'd have glow plugs and more than a spark to spark up...
Okay.
A combustible or a combustible fluid or liquid versus a flammable liquid.
Now, in terms of... You're kind of like the self-regulating board for yourself. If the structure above it is just made of four by fours, they're going to be like wallmanized or pressure treated?
The only wood that's gonna be on that structure is the four by fours holding it up.
Right.
The rest of it's gonna be metal.
Okay.
A non-combustible material.
Right. But in, you know, over time, the wood, it'd be 20 years or so, but it might...
$1987 when they built it.
Okay. Okay.
And it would be wallmanized, yes, and treated.
The dimensions, approximately, did I see 10 feet?
Let's put a pad at the top. Looks like it sits... It'll sit on a 10 by 10.
Yes, 10 by 10 pad.
Okay.
And I saw that you were gonna have like barriers, those metal poles?
Yes.
How's the lighting? I know that I saw two lights in the back. Is it light enough for someone?
It may be more than light... Yes, it will. And then the actual tank itself in there, if you look at it by crude drawing...
Uh-huh.
There's a light there that'll indicate when it's on, right? We're gonna have a switch inside so nobody can steal it, right?
Right.
So, we're gonna have a switch. And when that switch is on, the light will come on and then we can use the pump. And then we turn the switch off in the building and then that... That's what we do at Station Two currently right now.
Okay.
So, nobody can just come up there and take gas and start pumping it, right?
Right.
So, the power is on in the station. Flip the switch on, you're out there, there's a light on, gives you enough light to use it. Shut the light off, you know the fuel pump is off and secure.
Okay.
It is still locked as well.
Good to know. Any other questions? Environmental impact. Who better to take care of a gasoline spill or a fuel spill than you?
The only, you know, the only thing we're gonna do is remove some of the grass there and then we're gonna dig a little trench to the station. That would be the only environmental issue with the project. There's a leak. Again, we're better off now because we can have a dual wall tank versus a single wall. So, we're bringing... It's just gonna be a lot better idea than this.
And if there was an accidental spill, if it went in the drains, how explosive would it be at that point?
Um, very minimal. Again...
Would it be diluted with water or would you have to use some sort of foam?
Well, we would never let it get to the drains.
Right. Well, unknown, yeah.
I don't ever want it to get to the drain. And that's our first thing of a hazard I've seen is contain them, right?
Right.
So, I would contain it, make sure they're going further.
Okay.
If it did go in the drains, then we'd have to have a cleanup and all that stuff. But yeah, that's why we're far enough away and we meet those setbacks.
Okay.
70 feet at the minimum.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? And did you think that you would be able to begin this project after you submit the plans to the building?
Um, I would, but I'm probably gonna wait till spring.
Okay. Any other... Just looking here. Since it's a utili... The fire department falls under commercial, but it's also municipal. So, the village council had a meeting and they approved the waiving of the fees. I don't know if... Jerry, you knew that yet?
I did, yes. I did ask that in my letter. And President Mike McDonald told me that they were meeting to waive those fees.
Yes. The fees are waived.
Thank you.
The fees have been waived.
We have the two crash poles on the fuel loading side. Is there any reason to have crash poles on either side just because it would be...
Just on the traffic side is what they're saying. So, yeah, we just put them up there in front.
Not worried about...
Lawnmowers.
...rock stuff or lawn mowers?
Yeah, not worried about the lawnmower. Lawnmowers is just vehicle crash and they'll be yellow bulbs like getting down on the ground and it's cement and yellow bulbs from there.
Okay. Just looking through some of the codes here. We talked about lighting. He said he was going to conform to the state laws and the county laws for combustibles. We've got the double wall tank is to help with containment so that there is no groundwater overspill. The village clerk reviewed the plan and she, before submitting it to us, she said that it met all of the requirements for us to review it. So, if we choose to go ahead and have a vote that the plan is in order, it's our... It meets all of the planning commissions and the codes for the Village of Leonard and the zoning ordinance. Yes, but the wording...
I have a quick question.
You have a question?
Because I'm the clerk. Does that make it a problem for me to phone tonight?
I didn't mean the clerk. I'm sorry. I meant Judy.
The treasurer. Okay.
Is it supposed to be... Was it clerk or did I make...
It says clerk.
It says clerk?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't think that there's an issue.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be sure. All right.
Oh, I guess we can just raise it. Lori is the clerk, so...
Do we have a quorum if we step out?
That's what I was curious about just because if it would become an overlap situation, is there a quorum for me to step out of it?
Well, there is because there's...
There is.
Yeah, you could be... Yeah, just you can just vote.
Just be safe.
Yes. It won't nullify or, you know?
That's what I was concerned about. I just didn't want to cause like a wrench in the situation. And I mean, just because there's so much overlap of our duties, I know that we've kind of covered that over and over again.
Right.
I feel like you don't benefit from... I don't benefit from this anyway, right?
Right. There's no conflict of interest.
Yeah, no conflict of interest. I think as long as we put it out there just to be discussed, then as long as everybody's in agreement that they're okay with it, then I'll go ahead and vote.
And if we have a quorum, then we're...
Okay.
Right. Which like you said, we do, so we're good.
So, you guys can help me with the wording, but I'll say, could I get a motion for approval of the site plan review for the...
So, how about I will make a motion to... And I will do it slowly.
Okay.
Approve... Well, approve the Addison Township Fire Department application, site plan application for the addition of a diesel fuel... Tank.
Pump tank. What would you say? Is it tank pump?
Fill station.
500 gallons.
500 gallons. Diesel fuel. Diesel fuel fill station.
Diesel.
At Station One.
Right.
And recommend... Do we have to recommend to the village to approve it or is it done if it's here?
Um, good question.
I think...
I think just that we approve it and then it goes to... He gets an application.
Then I would be done.
Right. We approve, yes. Okay. That was Jennifer. Can I get a second?
I'll make a move to... To the department station fuel.
Fill station.
Fill station.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Done. Do we have any comments or questions? You know your next steps?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get permits and move forward with the traffic from there.
Right. I don't think there's a time limit for spring, but if it doesn't happen by spring, I guess, you know, you'll probably begin. Let's say it's...
Yeah, it's not gonna take but a couple days, right?
Right.
I just can't like... I wanna get some cement there, right?
Right.
We're gonna do a lot of that work ourselves. We're gonna dig the trench, but then we're gonna have electrician do the rest and we'll build a little shed, right?
Okay.
We can save money that way.
Right.
Although it's gonna cost us the electrical work.
Okay. Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Pretty much, yeah.
Have your Thanksgiving?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
That was a great idea.
I'm going to sign and date this. I'm not exactly what shirt page to do it on. I guess this page at the bottom or the front page too. Approved. November 16, planning commission meeting.
I'd say that probably improves the situation overall.
Yeah, it takes some of the traffic away from the other station.
You are so right. It's gonna get so busy with that pickleball.
Mm-hmm.
It's just...
They need less stuff over there.
Okay. So, I'll leave this upstairs for Judy. Okay. Next thing on the agenda which I misplaced. Here we go. That was... Give me another one. Oh, right here. Okay. Sidewalks update. At the village council meeting, maybe I'll let Lori just tell what money that's appropriated.
Oh, okay. So, what we were able to do was for a while, we weren't able to utilize block grant money because we did not qualify within like the census district for any low-income areas to do sidewalks. But I was able to work with them a little bit and they said, as long as I could use areas in which I would create connectivity, which would bring safety to the children in the village and, you know, senior citizens, handicapped people, we're going to make them ADA pathways. So, there's gonna be two kind of projects that I hope this summer might happen simultaneously. They might not. It just depends. So, right now, I'm doing the 2024 grant and the money usually comes through halfway through the year. That monies I am applying for sidewalks to be put. That one little end piece that's right there at Division and Forest Street on the east side of the street, a truncated dome and then the ramp going out across the street. Then you're over to Steenson, which is 4444 Forest Street. Sidewalk going across. We're gonna update that one ramp with truncated domes go across. Then 4422 Forest Street is the little white house. They cross theirs. They own the parcel next to it. And then hopefully, I'm gonna have the project approved all the way through Phil Stars. If that happens, that means that we're gonna have a lot of connected sidewalk because the nature park project right now is going to have also sidewalk. So, we would actually have a stretch of sidewalk that could possibly run from the nature park, leading people all the way into town, which would be really exciting. So, that's one phase, but that may end up happening more in August, like later in the year. The other project that I'm working on, which is for the reprogramming money, so the first one, that's $7,000. The other one is about $10,000. It's gonna be $3,398 plus 7,000. I'm gonna see... They said they would let me plunk them together. They're looking for us to do bigger, chunkier projects, not little piddly this and that.
Right.
So, it would be... And I have to say, the sidewalk study, that you kind of spearheaded. That was absolutely what I used like as my bible for doing this project. I was able to just like follow everything that was laid out and do it. It would be the 20-foot section in front of the Methodist Church. It would be a... What is the other one? A small section that would connect the Polyent Trail on the west side of the street, on Forest Street, that little like eight-foot section there. 306 East Elmwood across from the elementary school, both sides, sidewalk just ends and then there's driveway. It's a five-foot and a six-foot section there. It would connect that. So, it's just kind of like lots of little pieces that we can put it all together. And then all those will go through what's called Shippo and Tippo. There are the tribes and the historical commission. It should be green-lighted because it's mostly residential. And then we don't hear for them. We can start those projects in the spring. And so, we'll be looking for...
Thank you for all that extra effort.
Oh, my gosh. I... You know what? We've all wanted it done.
I know.
And it's just...
Years.
It's been...
It's been the number one line item in the... For... In the book from before Phyllis.
Yeah. It's exciting that we actually... You know, I'm gonna knock on wood that everything goes, you know, cross my Ts and dot my Is and I do it right and it all comes through.
Right.
And, you know, so...
Good job and thank you for all that effort.
Sure.
Village council meeting update. I'm gonna turn to Jennifer for any...
I think we are closed. Roll and hall will be closed.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Thanksgiving on the 22nd.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
And it's already closed on Fridays, so...
Fridays, we just closed. We'll just write it down here, 22nd. We've got the Christmas tree lighting is December 10th. We're gonna close the roads between 2:30 and 7:30 with most of the activities being, I believe, 3 to 6. I had that noted somewhere else.
Yeah, I just...
4 to 6 is my actual tree lighting is what I had noted.
On the webpage, it says 5 to 7 PM is the band.
Okay. So, we must have moved things around. That must be why it was that timeframe.
They have to set up and...
Yeah, 5 to 7. So, she'll have... They'll have the, I believe, gingerbread house competition, encouraging others to put in something other than myself and try to bring her down. And then code enforcement on Forest Street is an ongoing. That is 4285 Forest Street. That house, Mike did... Mike, along with all the inspectors, did enter, got appropriate authority or appropriate approval from the courts to enter the property and view condition. The house is severely degraded, likely to not be salvageable. So, it becomes a matter of what the village does next. And at this point, it's all just what does that court allow you to do? The owner had it up for sale for a while. They wanted $80,000 for it. They did not get the $80,000 for it. Surprise. And that owner, I noticed, also had other properties in Michigan House up for sale that were in just as awesome condition.
Really?
They're definitely a severely neglect, they're all severely neglected properties. So, that one will probably see its demise at some point, unfortunately, so.
Okay, well, hopefully, either it'll get fixed or raised, one of the two. And everybody's doing what they can. Any planning commissioners questions or nor concerns? Anybody have anything to bring up?
Just a question, you definitely want to have a December meeting, correct?
What's the date, we have only met-
That was my question, is how many times?
Right.
I just wanted to know it before-
February doesn't count because it's from last year. We tried to meet in July, but our power was out.
Right.
So, we, we probably should meet just in case we can't get a quorum.
That makes it December 21st, would be the third.
And it, you know, it should be a quick meeting like the last one was. So the next meeting is December 23rd, I would say, 23rd?
I'm sorry, 21st.
21st.
21st, 21st. So in the council meeting for December, I will not recommend, cancel it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Because this is only our second meeting.
So we have to do that one and then we have to do January.
Exactly.
February starts the new.
Well, February is still this, so we have one, we have one buffer.
Okay.
So if something happens, we really should meet in December because-
Power outage is-
Well, yeah.
I mean, here-
Just in case.
Okay.
It was legal.
So, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay.
It is 7:34.
7:34. Okay.
Excellent.